Good evening. This is the regular business meeting of the town West Bath Board Selectment. Before we get on to this evening's business, please join us in a pleasurable evening.
.......................................... Thank you very much.
This is our regular business meeting. We do have a forum. All folks are present. The consent agenda, the warrant for the whole town as well as the school is being circulated around. It hasn't already been acted upon. And the next regular meeting of this board, the next regular business meeting is Monday, March 12th, 2018 at 5:30 right here. And let's see. The consent agenda, do I hear it?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Do I hear it, sir?
Yes, sir.
And is there any discussion? All those in favor of dropping consent agenda as presented? And all over polled, pass is Carly. I'm going to selectmen's comments and announcements. I don't have them. Anybody else?
I know I started later.
Pardon?
The DMR meeting.
Yeah, sure.
As has been requested...
You started without me.
Sorry. Pam has set up a meeting with John Lewis of DMR for Wednesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM at the West Bath Fire Hall. And this was to, we had asked the DMR to address a variety of questions, including the question of overall plan for the Meadows, their long and short-term plans, particularly in the area of aquaculture, along with several other questions that DMR will know about. So that's April 18th at the West Bath Fire Hall. We're also inviting representatives from other towns on the watershed if they would like to participate. It's an informational meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Madeline. What's the time again?
Six.
At the fire station.
At the fire station.
And what, we'll send out all the emails as that comes up.
Yes. I just figured that now since I have the board meeting and then we can distribute some sort of information, put something on the website and so forth, do a flyer or something.
Good.
And I'll reach out to our neighboring communities and see who's interested and so forth.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madeline. Thank you, Adam. And Adam, you've got something.
That was it.
Okay.
Perfect. Got to come from both sides.
Yes, coming from both sides. Okay, no more selectmen's comments. Any citizens comment?
I wondered about a point of order. Can I hold comment till later or do I need to comment now? I want to make sure that I have an opportunity to comment, but I'd be more than happy to wait till the other section.
Sure.
If that would be okay. Yeah, provided I can give you time.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, considering the flower beds around the building.
Yeah.
As a county, we contribute money to soil conservation.
Yeah.
And I heard that they have some master gardeners who are heading for projects.
Oh.
So actually, you can contact them and see if they feel like a nice project.
They have to put in so many hours in order to qualify for their master gardener.
We had one a few years back and I think she did it twice a year.
Yeah.
So I think it might be worthwhile to approach them and see what they can do to help out.
All right. That's a good...
Andrew Scott.
Soil conservation?
Yeah, it's through the county. We, the county, they're a county line item.
So Pam should be able to give me contact?
Yes.
Yeah. And after the last couple of years, they would be ready to say this. Those last couple of budget goings. Okay, anybody else? Here we go. Move right along. I am committee, department, work group reports. Go back to regular business. First item on the agenda is proposed ordinance changes for fiscal year 2018 and '19. That would be specifically town meeting coming up in June or May or whatever. Have we, or have you received any ordinance changes from Alice?
I haven't received any ordinance changes from any employees or committees at this time.
Okay, nothing from the planning board?
Nope.
Okay. And you're not expecting any that you know of?
No.
And deadlines coming up?
Correct, it was Friday.
That's a hard deadline.
Yes.
Okay. So this will be the second, second year that we have no changes or adjustments from the planning board. We'll just make a note of that in the record to update the town ordinances to be consistent with the state statutes. It's been a long process that, well, it's spread out over 20 years or more, comprehensive plan and everything. And it's, it's nice that you sit back and kind of relax a little bit. I'm sure that the planning board is probably storing up items to put together, you know, perhaps for next year because coming through this does cost a little bit of money. So anyway, so we'll look forward to their efforts for next year if anything comes up. The next item on the agenda is appointments to meet. We have appointments to the, all four to the Harbors and Waterways Committee is Steve Singer, Michael Montgomery, Nelson Maris, and Deborah Bynum. This will, personally, I'm not going to discourage anybody who steps up who wants to serve on a committee. And, but this membership will total eight people at this point, which is fine with me, but the committee itself is going to have to meet elected chairman and decide how the committee wants to be situated with eight people on the rest. Yes.
The town website shows a committee of five with up to two alternates.
That's what I thought, yeah. I could look it up. I got it right here.
Well...
But I got you.
Well, I was just looking at the website.
Yeah, most committees are that, and that can be changed.
And we have four now.
Yeah.
With Steve Hinchman.
Yeah.
That's Joe and Pete, and I and Steve. That makes four.
Yeah. Let's see, Peter, Francisco, Joe, Val, or Jim, and Steve Hinchman. Yeah. So we have four people that have stepped up. And I don't know how the other two selectmen feel, but I'm not going to discourage anybody who wants to serve on a committee. Yeah, going to serve on that committee and the committee itself will need to figure out who is going to do what, how it's going to conduct business. How do the other two selectmen feel about that?
Well, I haven't thought of it that way. I'm a little concerned about the committee itself in view of the fact that we're having the DMR to come and chat with us. And since one of the principal things about reactivating it was concern about aquaculture particularly, I wonder if the committee should hold off on meeting until after we actually have the information from DMR to see what exactly the purview of its work would be.
You know, I agree with Madeline. I think that we need to figure out what they, or they need to figure out what their purpose is going to be having that meeting and how many people it sounds appropriate to be on. I mean, are we going to end up with 20 people on a committee?
Well, that's the thing, and that's why, that's why I want to unload the task of sorting out the committee onto the committee itself. We have certain committees that really are offended if we try to interfere with their week-to-week or day-to-day workings, constantly putting fires on the board. On the other hand, committees, committees need to have some sort of direction and leadership. And if we, the selectmen, load up a committee with 20, you know, committee of 20 people, might as well, well, look at Augusta. Case in point. Totally ineffective. So, you know, it's what we want to do.
Well, the committee has met twice. And, you know, we generated minutes in the first meeting and approved it. The second meeting, the minutes are in draft form and they should be approved on our next planned meeting, which is on March 7th, Wednesday at 5:30.
Yeah.
And Madeline, you know, offered to be a liaison to the committee. It's been very helpful having her there to clarify some things and, you know, give her input and so forth. The last time I met before the board, well, since that time I met with the board, we have a chair, that's myself, an elected chair, and I'm acting secretary. I'm looking for somebody to take the minutes, Joe and...
Pete.
So we're looking for a secretary. At a second meeting, Steve Hinchman had been appointed. He joined us. And Mike Montgomery...
Is that Mr. Hinchman, the attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Lives in Alway, Saddle House.
Yeah.
Alan Hazel.
That is last time he was in here.
Okay. And Steve Singer was at that meeting, Deb Bynum, and Mike Montgomery. So, and Mike has a cottage down near Joe and he also lives on the Hill Road. So we are planning on the next meeting on that Wednesday. And I know there was a lot of discussion about should we have a committee and so forth. And I've taken a look at some of the surrounding towns to see what they might have. And a little bit different name, but really does the same thing. And Hassel has a pretty good ordinance and Brunswick does, Pittsburgh, Rossecroft, and Georgetown. They all have some type of harbor committee.
So is West Bath.
Yes, in West Bath, of course.
Yeah.
At least for now. So, you know, we've responded to some budget requests and Joe and I have, you know, we've had discussions at the committee meetings and we just met before the budget committee and provided some input to them. There's been a lot of discussion around the, and the minutes, of course, are on line.
Yeah.
And, but there's been a lot of discussion around the aquaculture licenses and navigation and all of those things. And the last meeting, I think it was Madeline may have been the one who suggested it, that we meet with DMR, find out what the state laws are, how we're going to interact and so forth. So I didn't find anything on any of the other minutes of the other towns about aquacultures being controversial and so forth, yet. I haven't. But I think there's, there's opportunity for a few small changes to the ordinance, although we're too late for this year, but for next year. And, you know, we've had some pretty good discussions and I think the understanding among the participants has increased tenfold and will even more so after we met with DMR.
Okay.
So we're making some progress, you know, things don't move fast. You've got a venue, of course.
Just a thought on the meeting night. Either invite Hassel, Brunswick, Pittsburgh, and that's citizens out there still, as well as officials in West Bath. Do you think the fire station is big enough with parking and other considerations? Or should we see if we can visit school? I just wonder if you had 30 people in there, parking is an issue.
Yeah.
In mud season especially.
Yeah.
You might want to check and see if the school is available.
Yeah. Would it be worthwhile to see, make some calls, see how much interest we have from those towns first?
For sure.
If there is interest, then we'll move the venue and if there isn't, then we'll stick with the, kind of a thought process.
Yes. Questions for the board?
I guess my, regarding the committee, I see that, and I had an opportunity to watch all the videos and read all the minutes from this past few months. The Waterways Committee didn't meet since 2006.
Right.
Then they suddenly restarted again on the 10th. I should point out that that meeting, was that the meeting that took place at 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay, typically meetings take place at 5:30.
That's true.
And also...
However, the question at the time was when was the town office available? So because, because the committee was re-engaging itself, so it was, the town office was open at that particular time.
And they wanted, as per the minutes, they wanted people to get involved in it. They were saying they needed people. And then they scheduled the next meeting and I didn't see that listed on the website. And I'm still on waiting for the minutes for the last meeting before the, so I'm seeing pattern.
Once the committee meets and approves the minutes, then there'll be motion.
So the minutes from the last meeting...
When were the last minutes posted that would show the date of the following, the subsequent meeting? Because the meeting I had on the 7th, that wasn't on the calendar. Or what, was that?
February.
It was on the calendar, it was posted...
So you're...
I'm wondering...
One sec, let me go to the committee here for a minute. So the committee's policy is until the minutes are approved, if the next meeting, you know, post them, which is a good, safe way to do it. Is, would the committee consider posting draft minutes?
I suppose we could. We do post an agenda.
Yeah.
So that has in it the, the date of the next meeting and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah. And because people are always welcome to join us.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't have to wait milliseconds then.
I would have to know when it was to be here. So the, the posting of the minutes, so the, okay, so those are going to be posted after the next meeting?
After they've been approved.
The agenda, where is that then?
After they've been approved by the members.
Okay. And the agenda, where is that? Like when I go to the town website and I click on Harbors and think it's...
We have a mailing list. We have a mailing list that goes out by email. Carly manages it.
I'm on that now, subsequently.
So the best place to look for anything that's going on with the town is under, on the right-hand side, there's a link that says meetings and events. And once I receive the agenda, which legally it has to be in 24 hours before the meeting, if you click on that meeting, that will give you the agenda.
Okay.
And also the emails that I send out each meeting is actually a link and you can click on that for the agenda.
Okay.
If it's available at that time.
Great. Thank you.
And you call up the committee and click on that after the meeting and then as the minutes are available, it'll come up that way.
Great.
Yeah, it's all in there, you just have to find it.
And if you have any questions, you can just call me.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Well, that's what I, I guess, I would say the same for the committee and the, and the selectmen if you have any questions. Because in going through the minutes, or is this not the time for me to address that? In going through the minutes and watching the videos, I did note references made to my name and my wife and our LPAs. And I guess they were, it was a fact finding was what you tasked the Harbors and Waterways with, fact finding. There were incorrect facts on those things. And now they're public.
I have those, yeah. I'm not sure we have any.
The minutes?
Well...
We don't have any video of our meetings.
The video of the selectmen's meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that's what I, why I did ask some questions for you.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, you know, it was, there was reference to me having 12 LPAs, which I at this point only have three. And Mr. Bashan has four. My wife, who's home, her dog had surgery today, so she, she has four.
LPAs are...
Limited Purpose Aquaculture, which again, the Department of Marine Resources has a fabulous website that has all of the regulations and procedures on it. For example, there was a statement that I didn't notify all the people with, the repairing owners within 1,000 feet for, before my scoping session. That is not true because I actually had Carly, it's stamped and sent to the Department of Marine Resources. So that wasn't true. That I, I didn't follow protocol when exactly, I exactly followed protocol by putting things, my LPAs are over 300 feet from land, which as per the Department of Marine Resources, that is their requirement.
Yeah.
The other, the gentleman who have combined five LPAs on the other side, I believe four are definitely within 300 feet of a repairing owner and one of them, it's suspect because it's a mound that comes out that may not be considered property.
Okay.
But I, again, I was never contacted regarding, by anyone regarding any of this. And there was also statements that my gear is in the way of the cohoggers. Twice I've spoken, I spoke to the people that cohogge out on middle ground. This evening, I spoke to the gentleman and he said, and I quote, "Can't even see your gear this year. Last year we were, we saw it and we just didn't want to hit it with the motor." And also that a person on shore, and you could call Mr. Goodnow, a person on shore told him that he was wanting to make sure that those LPAs weren't renewed. And that he wanted, he thought that they must be in their way, the cohoggers, which is a statement that I also saw on the videos that were played here. And I believe someone in this room made that statement. I believe it was that gentleman right there.
I don't recall.
Okay. It's on the video. So that's why if, if there are questions regarding me, my gear, or my partners in this, feel free to call us and ask us. I think you're receiving disinformation.
I think that, I think that...
And it's disingenuous.
I think what the board has become concerned with is, in addition to the human relationships within the town, is the, the future, the plans of DMR. There needs to be clear information from DMR about what the, what the obligations are, what the rights of the town are, if any. So that's the reason why this meeting with DMR was set up, so that we could be working on information rather than emotion.
According to the comprehensive plan, which is the bible on which towns are, do whatever it is that towns do, which is, you know, and as well as the, our own ordinance, the Waters and Harbors Ways Committee, its mission, so to speak, has nothing to do with aquaculture.
That's my understanding of the plan. And the Harbors and Waterways Committee ordinances.
And we, we recognize the issue with aquaculture. And we can either think about adjusting the mission of this particular committee, or we can, we can thought something, or we can start another, whatever, whatever it is.
Okay. And that's what I, I guess I have questions regarding the committee itself or its, its agenda.
Well, it hasn't, it hasn't met in the last five or six years.
No.
So essentially, we're starting with a blank piece of paper, really.
And even, you know, in looking through the town, the town plans and navigability, West Bath's coastal waters are generally navigable to small watercraft. At one of the, on one of the videos I saw him say, "There are two huge boats." Well, just to put things in perspective, if I may, the combined area of the 16 LPAs presently in West Bath waters is 6,400 square feet. The footprint for one of those 48-foot boats that's out there is based on 48 feet by 15 and a half, it's a Sabre yacht, you can look it up.
Are we going to debate this?
744 square feet. That's if it sat in, in, when it spins on a mooring, you're looking at 7,234.6 square feet for that $10 mooring. If the concern is really navigation, I would think according to the plans, we would look at that mooring field that's, that we should be helping Joe with, you know, set up a mooring field. I don't think, the focus seems to be on aquaculture, let alone there are only two other leases.
You're, sorry, you're, you're bringing up topics that we have absolutely no knowledge of. It's making my hair hurt.
Okay, because they're in, you've posted a video with this information and my name in it several times.
Okay.
The town has, not you personally, but by doing so...
And that apparently was discussed at a previous selectmen's meeting, was it?
Yes, there's a number of them. This selections meeting, also a Waterways meeting.
No, we don't have any.
I'm just looking at the minutes that are all public information posted on the town website.
Where are we going with this? Are you filing a complaint?
Well, I'm wondering why I would like to be on the committee to provide some balance.
And I'd love to appoint you.
And, and then I also, I'm curious, what is that committee? What is their agenda? And you've even asked, making it, that's why we're meeting with DMR.
Yeah, we don't really know. There's a, there's a concern about aquaculture and we don't have an aquaculture committee. Would you have a shellfish committee?
Yeah.
That deals with regulation such as it can. Generally, regulation and licensing is at the state level, it's not at municipal level, but they deal with conservation. And also long-term planning, we have a planning board. As far as anything in riparian rights, anything like that, again, that's back to the state. So, you know, where, where's the fine line there? So there's an interest in the, the issue going forward. Planning is what it is, planning. And I, I think that's essentially where, where this is all going to land and the DMR is going to come down and essentially tell us what we need to be doing. I've read the statute. I don't see a lot of, you know, there's a lot of gray area.
And that's what my, my, my feeling has been, that the, the selectmen have been operating appropriately, you know, and, and directing this information gathering.
Yeah.
And come from that, I just wonder, you know...
So we, yeah. I guess where we're at is we ask the probably more Waterways Committee to hold until we meet with the DMR to find out what it is we're supposed to be doing.
That, that really would be my recommendation, that until we have...
We publish by the next meeting now.
Can we unpublish?
We can cancel it.
When?
The seventh, you talking about?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, October 7th.
Are you guys agreeable with that?
Well, I mean, I, if this gentleman was appointed tonight, you know, I think it'd be good to have a meeting. You know, and we can talk about all these things and, you know, and obviously, he's got some things on his chest he'd like to speak about. So, I mean, it's certainly whatever you think.
I'm not sure that the meeting should be canceled, actually, if it's supposed to be go ahead with these appointments.
So it's really?
Go ahead with these appointments.
I don't have a thought one way or the other, I mean, it's whatever you think we should do. I mean, he's, he's certainly welcome to come as a gentleman of the public.
You guys have started the momentum, Mike. Stop it.
Okay, I feel totally wishy-washing on this.
Totally wishy-washing?
Totally wishy-washing. If, go ahead with the appointments. Have the meeting. Then the next, the next action of the committee should be attendance at the DMR informational meeting. And then another meeting of the committee to see whether or not there's a job.
Take, take what you've learned, you know, take what you've learned from the DMR and say, "All right, what do we do?"
Would it be wise to, if you make these, if the board makes these appointments this evening, have them sort out amongst themselves, who they want to be their alternates and who they want to be the primary members?
I think if it makes me, that would be good.
Well, I would ask the, the selectmen to choose on that, if you would. Because that's, we have four regular members now, and you have to decide if you need to, you know, you know, regular, it isn't really gonna make any difference, because people are gonna have the same say, it's just.
I think for the, I think for the.
Maybe that's a conversation for after the DMR meeting.
Yeah.
We have four hot ones that want to serve on the committee, I'll, I'll get through my.
So maybe we let the four hot ones and we cap it.
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking tentatively until, and then we can discuss, or the.
All, all of the committees are out of the purview of the board.
But the committees run themselves.
But the committees run themselves, so I think what, I think.
I'm thinking five regulars and three alternates.
Yeah, I think that would be normally what would happen. And, and maybe first come, first served.
And make, make Joe an alternate, make Joe an alternate, the harbor master. That makes sense. Ask him, or ask the committee if they want, or ask Joe if he's okay with that.
Doesn't make any difference, I know I'm a master, I do.
I served as.
I do.
I served as chairman of the selecting board.
I don't, I don't agree with a bitch session. You know, we got, we gotta agree on things, but coming here and bitching about everything is stupid.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. And I was chairman of the planning board for thirteen years, most of those I was an alternate, so it doesn't, all it is, you don't have a vote.
Yeah, that, that's fine with me. But I mean, I am the harbor master and as far as what goes on in the river, I pretty much know. And I know if it's right or wrong, so.
Right. So, for purposes of moving things along, let's make the appointment with the caveat that the committee may be redesigned.
Renamed.
Renamed.
Repurposed, most definitely.
Repurposed, following the meeting with the DMR. And I would make that a motion, that we appoint those, those persons who have been nominated with the understanding that, that they would be open to renegotiation or re-purposing of the committee, following the information session.
Okay, and I'd like to add to that, that the committee, committee be responsible for developing essentially its mission statement. Because on, on the grounds that the committee has more skin in the game, or that stake, understanding of the issues, and come to the selectmen with a draft mission statement for essentially our blessing. Which, and then it'll be an official committee, be it called Harbors and Waterways, or be it called whatever it winds up being. Does that sound workable?
Uh, well, I'd like to think that the Waterways and Harvest Committee would always continue because it deals with harbor mast issues and the lines and so forth.
We can.
If there might be a side committee that could be, or another committee formed, just concerned themselves with aquaculture perhaps. But, and, and those issues.
The, the mission for the Harbors and Waterways Committee can be changed, can be altered, can be added.
Sure.
Whatever we decide to do.
Okay.
Essentially, at this point, it's, we're at what's in a name. For the moment, it's called Harbors and Waterways Committee.
It may change, it may not.
But in, in the ordinance and in the comprehensive plan, what we're talking about is not this committee's, that happens to be called Harbors and Waterways Mission.
Okay.
So, we need to get that in line, and it's, it's housekeeping, it's not important, really, in the long and short of it. We'll take care of it.
Sure. If you would please, just so, you know, if we do have votes and so on, I know who, who has that.
Yep.
You know, the first five, you know, will be comprised of committee and the committee votes.
Do you have a record of which board or the?
In your binder, they're in the order in which we were received, ever received, excuse me.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hello? Are you? Sir, are you?
Up.
Oh. I think I cut you off for a while.
Well, that's, I mean, if there are any other questions, I mean, it was concerned with navigation. These two gentlemen sail extensively, I live in Brigham's Cove, their boats are more than Brigham's Cove. They seem to feel, you know, navigation isn't so hard in a sailboat, both under, with or without boat. I won't speak for you, you're not. They don't use their engines very often.
It's nice to have you here, but thi- this isn't, this isn't a hearing about whatever. Perhaps at, at the committee meeting, I guess we are going to meet in March. Are we? We're meeting in March?
Whatever you say.
It was originally scheduled for March 7th.
It's been posted on the.
Okay.
On the, and maybe we could chance to get, get some things yet, so.
Organizational and just, just talk meetings. Just talk meetings, I don't know. There's some issues in the air that probably ought to be hashed out. And, and this isn't, right now, is not the forum, because I don't have any idea what it's targeted.
Well, that's what I thought they were doing, fact finding, to give you that information, just cause my name, like I said, did come up in all these things.
Those, those are, those are deeper in the weeds issue. I hate to say it, but there's more, that's more detail than, you know, where it's handled. Unless, you know.
Well, that's what I, I guess I was feeling, that they're, they were running a forum to espouse things that may or may not be accurate. And I thought I would come in for a call for some clarity.
Okay.
Your, your, your perspective will be, will be thoroughly related as we go along. Feds have a way of coming out of spats.
You know, they, my dad also, you can tell the truth, you don't have to remember what you said, it's that easy.
So.
I would suggest that the board, before their meeting, let it be known to the committee, who the members are, who the alternates are, by their meeting.
Yep.
On the 7th of March.
Oh, you mean like a list?
Yes.
Yeah, we should.
Clarify who's on first, who's on second.
No, we can do that.
We should appoint alternates and, and voting members.
Um, okay.
That's fine, just as long as we do before the committee meeting, that's fine with me.
Well, we could do that tonight, right?
Yep.
You don't have another meeting before, unless that was.
We don't have another meeting, so we should.
Yep.
The 7th.
Do we have a.
So when is the?
You are, you want me to be an alternate, I'm, I'm gonna be a regular.
Well, you're appointed right now until June.
I am a regular, and I'm gonna stay there until they tell me I'm not. Okay, Pete?
Mm-hmm.
With that in mind, would be best just a.
Yeah.
That was cool.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Postpone your appointment?
I just looked at the calendar and I'm not in town on March 7th.
Oh, well, we want you, do you want to postpone the appointment? Or you want to appoint tonight?
I'd rather postpone the meeting. And that way, we could, we could do the, the actual appointment of position on the 12th.
Here, floor.
Here on the 12th.
Okay.
Would that work for all you?
Yes, all.
You're good for that, Joe?
I'm good.
Okay.
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 I won't be here on the 12th, but that's fine.
You won't?
No, no. It's just we'll be appointed.
It, yeah.
I can't be, I can't be here on the 12th.
We can appoint you on the 12th, but with, I mean, you're already appointed.
I'm already appointed.
So you don't need to be.
Okay.
And I, I doubt, you know, I doubt that since you were asked to be chair at the, at the meeting in January, that you couldn't be turned into an alternate during the.
Whatever you wanna do with me, that's all I can.
Okay. So, my motion didn't have a second, so shall we do, shall we try this again?
We have a motion.
I move the appointment of Steve Singer, Michael Montgomery, Nelson Maris, and Deborah Bean to the Waterways and Harbor Committee, positions in the committee to be determined and announced at the March 12th meeting of the board of selectmen.
So we want a table?
No, I'm, I'm appointing these people.
Oh, okay.
We're not, we're gonna name their positions on the 12th.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you, okay. I'll look at the floor.
Is that right?
Okay, I say I'll have motion.
Any discussion, everybody understands what we're doing here? Cause thirty seconds ago, I didn't.
No. I'll be here the 12th.
We're making, we're making appointments, but we're not assigning function within the committee.
Okay.
And the committee's okay with that, right?
Sure.
Okay, whatever works. All right, hearing.
And, oh, go ahead. No.
We got a motion on the floor.
Let's go to the motion.
Okay. All, all four of these folks, Steve Singer, Michael Montgomery, Nelson Maris, and Deborah Bean, all four. All those in favor of appointing these folks, and all those opposed, they are appointed to the.
Congratulations.
All right, so Jim, should we just, you and I talk on the phone about what to do about the 7th?
Well, if you're not here, then we'll have to postpone that.
Okay, you wanna postpone. Do you wanna postpone to the 14th?
That's fine, okay.
Okay. Let's postpone to the 14th, or the March 14th? Yeah, okay, same time, same place.
Okay, the 12th is gone, the 14th?
The 12th is just the, the board meeting at which time we will.
The select.
We'll do the, you don't have to be here.
Okay, the 14th is when we, we meet.
So not one of us.
So the 7th meeting won't happen.
So we'll just.
Right, cancel the 7th, do the 14th.
Right. Is that okay, Nelson?
And when will that, when and where will that be?
5:30, right here.
Right here, great.
That's just the select meeting.
Wednesday.
On, on Wednesday at 5:30.
On Wednesday, the 14th.
Oh, okay, so we are happening then.
Right, okay.
At 5:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Welcome on board, everybody. Who is here and who isn't. Okay, Harbors and Waterways Committee, any more business you have to talk about on that subject? Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for your interest. It's nice to, it's nice to see interest in any committee. But this one, this one is aquaculture and the future of the town of West Bath, particularly along the new riverway, is a little bit more important, just a run-of-the-mill issue thing, because it's, stakes are high. Thank you. Moving on. Harbors and Waterways Committee discussion, with this, Jim, quick claim deed.
I guess you don't need me, then.
You are. We're using bird now.
Okay.
That's enough company.
It's not that we don't need.
It's just that you're needed more, so we welcome, we welcome.
Everybody, guys.
They don't go together, your wife didn't dress you.
That's real nice, isn't it?
Thanks for coming, everyone.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
We've never met, I'm Johnson Orton.
I already know.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was your thing.
Quick claim deed. I guess.
I'd like to have something said.
Throw this over to Adam, which we talked about this last time.
Sure. Very simply, the Little Brothers LLC, Mark Sewell, he, his property went into foreclosure. As noted, it's map R2 lot 26-5-V2, for went into foreclosure, failed to pay taxes. He has since come in and paid his taxes in full and is asking the board to.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time and attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Asking the board to deed the property back to him. If the board is agreeable, I have brought a quick claim deed with me, prepared by the tax collector. Tax collector also assures me that these taxes have been paid in full and also enclosed. We'll find out in a case in a second.
Okay.
So.
Okay, all those in favor are approving, and.
I'm, I'm of approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor, and all those opposed? The quick claim deed is. Uh, let's see. The baby. The baby, on number six. There you go.
Yeah, they're, they're renewable, it's all right. The person sitting in the baby, I'm gonna try to name you.
They were, um, they, they were running due to work schedules or something to that effect, so that's why we put them last.
Uh, okay, so they did plan on being here, they don't need to be here. Generally, they don't need to be here for us to conduct this business. However, generally, especially if they've expressed an interest in being here, we tell them to address the issue unless they are here. So do we want to put this aside until such time as they are here, or?
Forgive me for not recalling. Forgive me for not recalling up, but what is the deadline for abatements? This year, we're getting close, aren't we?
Yeah.
It's in March.
It is getting close.
I think sometime, rest of March.
Do you want me to double check the calendar upstairs?
Would you please, so that way we don't table it and then.
Who's the deadline?
Create from.
Ninety percent sure I have that.
Well, that's true, it does start the process, so maybe that, that probably is the answer.
I mean, say, say it winds up in court and goes round and round for five years, you know, that goes way beyond.
We just continue here.
That's true, that's true, that makes, that makes good sense.
I would, I would, I will get a vote.
I would throw my own.
Board, I would say the date of the, the uh, prob, the abatement application to run should be the date that this process was started and the ticking clock has been frozen. If you two colleagues of mine are agreeable.
Sixty days to answer to it, uh, sixty days to begin that.
Where are we going down then?
We're getting both.
Yeah, because this was received before the last.
Yeah.
So the deadline is March 19th. Six months after commitment.
Uh, September 19th. I, I favor freezing the date at my. February 11th date, that was. January 12th, the application date.
I think basically, past practice and common courtesy, if the applicant indicates she may not make it because of the work schedule, we should at least afford that person a chance to speak on that behalf.
Yeah, they indicated they wanted to be here, so I, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think we should act until they're here. So let's know that we didn't do so.
Not to make this complicated yet again, we received this on the 12th of January, we have sixty days by state law to respond.
Oh, okay.
So, our next meeting is the 12th of March. So. Not real slick in the math department here, is that, are we still with, we should still be within sixty days, within a few days.
Twenty-eight days.
So we should be good to go, we have to address.
We have sixty days to respond to the application for payment? Um, it's already been responded to. Now it's in essentially.
Selectment.
We've been denying the trial.
Sixty days to act.
Yeah, our program is sixty days.
Okay. Oh, that's right, we're, we, you know, so what do we do?
So if we waited for the 12th?
Sounds like we would be within a couple of days of the deadline, so we'd be fine.
Yeah, so even if there's a snowstorm on the 12th, there's a meeting.
Well, then it has to be an agreement by both, both pads that they, they hope.
Two. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay. Motion to table. Fabulous.
Seven. Sorry, I'm asleep at the wheel.
All those in favor of table until the 12th? So table. I know we're. Okay, other.
And that answer?
No other. Of course, we should.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
One information, Adam doesn't know this, um. At our meeting, much meeting last week in the fire street. We did ask him to uh, stop the ball rolling one. Start thinking of a new fire truck.
Yeah.
Started the process two years ago, we talked about it, and he indicated five years lifetime of the truck. And then it'd be twenty-five or twenty-six years old. So we did suggest to him that he stop that process and looking at trucks and prices and how long it would take to actually get a truck once you order it. We don't want to be as, positioned as a town heading to order a truck like that, cause it's gonna cost you more and you won't get what you want. If something happens to that truck in the deadline, for whatever reason.
Yeah.
We're in hot water, so we asked him to stop.
Okay.
That process.
Um, do you know if they're, this might be premature, do you know if they'll take you about a new one?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thought, as the chief brought up, John Dean brought up, is that right now the truck is worth something. As far as trading or selling it to another town or whatever.
Yeah.
Think of last trucker to Wyoming.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Sold it on eBay.
Yeah. So, it is worth something now, so he's gonna start looking at that possibility. He thought he'd wait for a year to year and a half to get a truck once you order it, so.
Take delivery takes a year and a half plus then the time to set it up.
Yeah.
Well, if he can get established with whoever he works with, an agent or whatever, he goes through a service. He'll have time to look at loan, cash payment, lease purchase, all of it.
He, he has done some preliminary work, but he would uh, indicate he's trying to move it forward and get, and get it going, cause that time will fly by.
Yeah, it will. Good.
And it is a purchase, we will have to put up a bid.
You think?
Of course, according to our policies. If you, if you have ideas.
Own a financial professional, you think?
It's only five thousand dollars.
A couple dollars.
You mean, who knows, bottle sales isn't gonna be able to come through.
It was a nice fire truck for sale in Richmond at one of the places that I noticed. I'm not too long.
Did I miss it?
Whoa.
Oh.
Can we untable?
We can untable if you want.
I tried to get your first file.
That's all right. A motion to untable previously tabled.
I think it's taken off the table, I see.
All of them taken.
Traditional language.
We, uh, it came out just a few minutes ago, we tabled because uh, we learned that you had indicated that you wished to be present.
Yes.
Um, we don't, your presence is not required for us to act on it, however, our policy is if you, especially if you made it a point to let somebody know that you want to be here.
God, I know the lights were that bright, couldn't I?
They're off.
Oh, temporary sunglasses are in the bag of the weekend.
Okay, well, that to leave the. I guess uh. Let's go around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, pretty much, I wrote up what I thought, the, the fact was concerning it. And they are, you, you should have a copy of those.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, I know she paid sixty-five thousand for it, she paid one twenty-one seven acres. And it is uh, classified as the waterfront.
Yeah.
And I did notice that, and I don't, I think I put that all in it. Maybe, I did, no, I guess I mentioned it. All, all the properties around it have uh, have higher factors, uh, condition factors.
Yeah.
But topography, whatever, and uh, the problem is, and that's the number one thing you do is, is you look at it and you say, well, how is everybody else being treated in, you know, in the area? And you go through all the other accounts to see uh, what's, what's going on with them. And so basically um, I come up with, you know, they're all the same except for this one here is the lowest because of, of topography and so forth. And in all actuality, if you look at the waterfront property for sixty-five thousand, that's pretty reasonable. Same as how a non-waterfront property is between sixty-five and sixty-eight. So basically, I don't see how we can do anything with it. Again, it goes back to the problem we've had before is, you know, waterfront that's undeveloped is, seems to be uh, assessed extremely high.
Yeah.
And some of the sales have proven that. And it's probably a matter of time before it does develop, right, it's. But as the priorities concerning uh, this account, uh, I can't see how, how you can abate it. From, at least last time he has raised out, yeah, he has not given you.
Okay.
The, the comparable lots are, are, are all taxed at, at the same rate?
Yeah, the formula is exactly the same, except for this one here, I did notice, if, if it wasn't the property around. It's, the formula is law. When you give, when you, when you start to multiply process formula, you get the condition factor, the condition factor is a lower than the other lots. So that reduces the, the property somewhat.
Yeah.
In valuation, but uh, I, I do realize that uh, it is, you know, it is. Like I told you people before, you know, most of these properties are solid, go, you know, half or a third of what everybody assessed for. And until we address that problem. We're always gonna, we've had this problem last year with the, the properties on Williams Island. And they sold some of those, but again, about the, the value.
That's gonna involve the entire revaluation of the towns.
No, I don't think so, I, I think that uh.
It starts us on a path to a total revaluation.
Yeah, starts us on a path unless we can do something, uh, and we do, we do wanna look at, at what Trio can do for us, and if it's possible. Because you're gonna have to have the same basics that you've got in Vision to start with. I mean, the same formulas are gonna have to apply, be applied, but only through, through Trio now. It would not be acceptable to just say, this is the value, and then go forth without any way of getting there mathematically. You know, it was like that. Unless they can do that, then you'd be better off to turn around and.
Unless the baseline of valuation and adjusted.
It's gonna be exactly the same right now, and then that, that will take just have a property down a lot.
Yeah.
But uh, with the rest of the town as, as well, uh, it would, it would, cause quality rating is not bad right now. And it, it seems to be a, a problem uh, with this particular type of property. Now, the properties that are selling on the waterfront that are fully developed, that's a different story, that they're selling for five more than we got them assessed for.
Yeah.
Yeah, five more, a lot, I mean, that, these stuff by me, they were assessed for six hundred and eighty thousand, they were one, one point two million for it. It's just getting out of whack. But even, even if we end up going to a vision, that there, there are other things we can do. Because I'm not gonna, you know, as a taxpayer myself, I don't wanna see a town to go through another, another revaluation. So I'll do everything I can to stop it. Well, it's, it's not only that, but they agreed to get the ninety, ninety-three percent of the houses. They allowed appointments for, for a count.
Yeah.
And you're coming up with a lot of mistakes, a lot, a lot of mistakes that have to be fixed.
But based, based on the information that we have currently, based on the, on the um, on, on the taxation formula that's in operation for all the other properties in town.
Right, in that area.
Then you would not, you would not recommend granting the abatement?
No, no, I, I can't, I don't see I can't, cause that's priority one, is they, they don't care what the taxes are. The state don't, yeah, is everybody being taxed on an equal basis?
Yeah.
By the same formula, and I, I think that's what applies here.
Yeah.
And to be clear, everybody is being taxed by the same formula?
Yes. It is. Except for this was a little lower because of the topo.
Yeah.
That is.
And what do you want to make?
So my question is, obviously by statute, the, the assessment's supposed to be based on fair market value, which is supposed to be what Vision does, et cetera. So, when you buy something.
Just value?
Well, uh, fair market value is true, okay? So we're still working on the formula we used in two, in two thousand seven. When we did the reveal, everybody's. Just value is referred to, is everybody supposed to be assessed at just value? Just value is considered market value, of course. That is true. The, the problem with West Bath is we have a lot of dead neighborhoods, a lot of them. And each one carries different formulas. And talking over the state about it, they said, well, you're gonna go to one neighborhood, you better come up with three sales, four sales to, to change anything in that neighborhood. And as for the last two or three years, the, the, the undeveloped waterfront land, considering, so untable ads is not, is not much of a seller. So, they recommended to me, they said, how are you gonna, how are you gonna do it? You can't, you got nothing to stand up on. And that's, so the answer to your question here, yeah, just value is fair market value. Same thing.
Right, and so the fair market value is about a quarter of, you know, little, yeah, about a quarter of the assessed value. Which seems sort of like an onerous burden for people to maintain that sort of percentage.
Well, it is, it is, and, and, and that's just what I was put forced to learn this time. I mean, whether we go with Trio, Trio can do what we want it to do, it can do what we want it to do, we gotta stay with Vision and, and we gotta work something out.
That's not really part, not to try, that's not pertinent to this discussion, though, that's.
No, no, but it, but that's, that's, that's the attack I see before most, is the waterfront undeveloped property. And once you go into that and create enough sales to go into that, even if we done the sales, the ratio stays as I said. I mean, I've done them before, it takes a little while to do them, but that what's scary is the different neighborhoods we have, the western, the southern, the northern, neighborhoods are all different. And, but right now, the, the, you know, like I said, uh, I feel with, with what the sales have, I've seen around here. I feel that, that, you know, you got, you gotta bring a deal with what you paid for.
Yeah, but I'm not really sure because of comps, I know even when I had my Realtor, we looked at it, and there were other pieces of West Bath. You're right, land isn't, land that's not developed is not very popular, a lot because of the cost of developing it. So really, the market value's not there, which is why, I mean, I didn't know this guy, this was an armsline transaction, and I didn't hop right on it, it was on the market for a while, and he's tried to sell it repeatedly, constantly dropping the price, so. I, I do have a bit of an issue, because I may be, I'm too much of a linear thinker, that, like you said, that, that in, you read the statute, and it really is supposed to be fair market value. I understand the dilemma of trying not to adjust, but as you said, you've had other sales on Williams, et cetera, that, that the land value is really. Especially if, if it was just slightly, there'd be ten percent difference, I could understand. But when we're talking twenty-five cents on the dollar, um, it's, you know, it's fair enough, for, for me, I don't want to develop it, I know that has nothing to do with the value, but like you said, it gets harder and harder to hold land, you know, around here, which is a whole fair amount.
It really is.
And I never complained about any of my other assessments.
Also, that is because anybody who comes in and wants to park that land, they want something that's already built on.
Right. And like you said, this one in particular, which I, if you didn't bring up, there is an easement, which I didn't bring up either, because I thought it was gonna be based on fair market value after reading the statute, but, you know, there are other issues, I think, with this property that probably go beyond, you know, what Vision ever looked at. Because I, I do know, but Vision's numbers were a little funky when they did them.
And, and I still look at some of the things because, because the, the uh, condition factor's a lot lower on that particular piece than the rest of them around it.
I'm not gonna pass judgment on Vision, but I know in one of my pieces that they assessed very high, I went in and talked, a few minutes, talked about, and they dropped it about a hundred and twenty thousand, which doesn't, things that I brought up, so. I'm not gonna say, it, it never can be a perfect process, and I understand that.
What is the, is it easement?
Right, there is a walking easement on the parcel, which I think, I think I mentioned casually to you, it's on the deed.
The deed, yeah, is deeded?
Yep, yep, it is deeded for perpetuity, and I actually have a deed in the car for me to, but there's that, plus I think the size is smaller, I know the town hits a one point one, but when I look back, I think it's probably point eight. But that's, there's some border problems.
Is that, is that the one that's at at the very end of the real estate?
Yes.
It is the one that's at the very end.
Yeah, not at the super end, but the point comma T, but the one that's next to McDonald, the the last, that that the sort of triangle with undeveloped land, right by the...
Is there a house to the south of it?
Yes.
That was, yeah, I don't...
Yeah, so that's the one that has border issue.
I don't remember an easement across it.
Yeah, it's an old easement, it was put on, when it was called the bathing place down there, but I have it in the car.
Okay, yeah, now maybe they took that into account, I don't know, if it's a deed, obviously, they probably did.
I'm not gonna give you Vision high marks.
Do you, do you have any, uh, do you have any, um, evidence to, commentary, or...
Well, no, I mean, I I'm certainly going to appeal, and if I need more, like I said, I I thought it was pretty, for me, it was fairly cut and dried, since it was an arms length transaction, it's here, like, you know.
We, um, Ron advises, Ron is the certified assessor, even though we're responsible for the assessment for Ron.
I know, and some of his precedent, I'm sure you don't necessarily set a precedent, no, you know, because you set a precedent and...
We were really not qualified to question Ron's reputation.
No, I understand.
But...
Or for the entire program of fund which the taxes are based.
Yeah, um, you, we we have the Board of Assessment Review, which is a field board, and you most certainly have that right, um, to take, take this appeal, should we uphold the denial? To, yeah, that's your, that's your next avenue.
No, I consider, and I know it's essential, I have to do it, I think, it's unfortunate, because you're right, and again, I'm a linear thinker, it should be not, I hate to say act of Congress, because it's got a bad name right now, but, like you said, to to affect certain, which I would consider a fair adjustment, but...
Trouble, trouble with the reval really is timing.
Right.
The reval we had this last time, we needed desperately, we desperately needed it, and we needed it when we got it.
Right.
The trouble is, when we got it, it was right at the very peak of real estate, real estate has since crashed and has come back at different rates. And waterfront is been rocketing ahead of, you know, where other mere mortals just choose, uh, real estate, and that's the problem, that's the inequality.
Right. No.
It might make some difference if, if the tax maps is, what, one point eight?
Yeah, one point one seven. One point one seven, I think it's actually point eight.
Yeah, right, it's some difference, huh?
I think the one point one seven was was taken by, from taxes, probably so that...
But I know on the property, when, that I bought it from, he thought it was point eight, we bought it, and then later listing it up to the town, it was one point one, so...
So we ready to consider this, uh, abatement?
I know that the abatement be denied on the basis of current information.
Can I hear a second?
My second question.
Any discussion?
Can I cry?
Hearing that, all those in favor of denial, I hold you exiled, you think? And all those opposed, your abatement has been denied. There's a, there's a time frame, is there a time frame?
So I was gonna say, you'll receive a formal note of the denial, and it'll include details on how to appeal the decision.
Is there a time limit on that, just because it's...
There is, I don't know what this exact moment...
I can't remember what it is.
If you...
I couldn't even guess at it at this point.
Ron, would you be kind enough tomorrow to reach out to the young lady and inform her what the time frames are, so that she could...
Well, certainly, yeah, yeah.
That'd be great.
I used to know...
It might be on our website.
I don't know, it's thirty days or sixty days, I don't know.
I think it's forty-five.
There is a forty-five today, I didn't ask when you go to court.
But we'll make sure that you get everything. And, um, well, and happy appeal, Ron will be there for the assessor. Somebody from us will be there for the...
Right, so I have to ask, I mean, you don't know, since you don't do appeals, since you have to go with Ron's recommendation, which is fine, and he has so much on appeal, the question is, do you appeal on, I mean, if I get an appraisal, it doesn't matter, because really, buying is, you know, it's similar, so so really, what facts, where can actually prevail? Do you have to do a revaluation, which I can't force you to do, but that's sort of my query, is like, how do you actually, since fair market value doesn't really come into play, which I thought it should?
If you got some plausible comps, you have, that might do it.
Yes, so comps, even though I bought something that's not considered proof, because I could have some sort of inside line on it, so I'd have to get comps, which is hard, because, you're right, if you're waterfronts area, it's slightly different, but, alright.
They're looking for signi- uh, significant evidence of...
There's even stuff like lavender lane up here, they've sold for very little, one sold, I think, one didn't, I mean, it's different size factors, but, um, and there's another one that was for sale, and that sold, but... I mean, the fact of the matter is, yeah, most of that land, especially title, I mean, this is not prime.
No.
I didn't even want it, other than, but it's mine, I mean, I wanted it because it was my property, but I I was actually really happy not having any of my property touched, even though it's rated, it is pretty crappy title, but, so, so, sorry, I said crappy. It's alright, it's all okay.
So to answer you, sixty days to appeal.
Okay.
Uh, and the guidelines, instructions, if you wanna get a head start on the letter, are all under Boards and Committees, there's a Board of Assessment Review that has the application and the guidelines.
Very good.
You will be getting that in writing as well.
Very good.
I love people.
Thank you.
Alright.
Sorry we couldn't do any other for you, but...
It's sad.
If you're the cry for the camera lady.
Another taxpayer cry, but there's...
Okay, we have no other, right? And no other, that's a shame, that's a shame.
You wanted an executive session tonight, dude. Uh, you scared me.
Right here, a motion for adjournment.
So low.
Thank you for coming.
All those in favor, we adjourn at six forty-eight.
Just like you were saying, it was, no.
I'll fight much to find out better.
On the east end, however, that's bad.